This time we'll go ahead and call the, uh, call toward the November zoning commission meeting. Let the record show that Paige Becknell and Sherri Slimon are absent. This time we'll open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item that is not up for public hearing, please come up and sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak? That's the item four, acceptance of the minutes of the October 11th, 2006 zoning commission meeting.
Make a motion to approve?
Have a motion by Steve Barrow to approve, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item five, public hearing to re, uh, to consider rezoning cases. Five A zoning review ID 1613.06, portion on lot D and tract C dash one of the John K. Marshon property, a portion of tract C dash two dash B dash one of the Sylvia G. LeBlanc property, all of tract C dash two dash B dash two of the Gonzalez family LLC property, and all of tract C dash two dash B dash three of the Financial Holding Corporation of Louisiana and all property for Delta Builders.
Ellen Jackson here representing the owners of this, these properties, asking to rezone from RM to mixed uses and asking for your approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
What happens to that vacant land between, between the parcel? I mean, you know, it's a flag shape, this area.
Do you have a copy of this? You asked me what's happening to it?
It's this part right here. This part he's talking about. It's kind of a finger in between that triangle.
This part?
It's this little triangular part right there. Who's talking about?
Oh, that?
Right.
Well, that is part of, um, that's already existing in, in you zoning.
So that's already what?
Mixed uses.
Oh, okay. Some of it is.
Well, you see the heavy line is, it outlines which side is existing in mixed uses and on the other side is showing the RM zoning. And if you're talking about this piece, listen. Little pick, with a pick?
I just got this piece. All I'm saying is this is mixed use. This is my son, my, yeah. Okay. Robbing it all. Might not be terms of, like, I'd say. I just think it's, yeah. Right.
Can't conditionally rezone property.
No, I was just curious.
My name is Debbie Bro and I'm the owner of the portion that's for Financial Holding Corporation. And our proposal with this particular property that we did a preliminary with the, uh, the engineering company is to do garden homes and it would be a proposed 13 lot development. Possibly it may have to go down to 12 lots. The lots would be an average of 51 wide and 142 feet deep. We feel like it's a good buffer zone between commercial and residential.
It, it's a, are the lots going to be fee simple? Are the lots, are they going to be fee simple? You're going to, you're going to sell the dirt underneath the unit?
We're going to build a garden home.
So it's going to be like an apartment building?
No, a garden home.
Like a townhouse?
No.
A garden home.
I'm sorry. It'll be a house with, basically that's a little smaller in size, but with five foot on the sides, I guess you could say, so.
And that has to be a mixed use?
Yes, sir. Garden homes have to be mixed use, yes, sir.
Not a question. Um, looking at part of the write-up here, uh, the properties have frontage along Airline Highway and Black Bayou Extension. I don't see the properties here that we're looking at that actually have frontage along Airline Highway.
Right.
But that's what I'm saying. The properties have frontage, this is what I'm reading as far as some of the-
Financial Holding doesn't have frontage on Airline Highway. It's on Black Bayou Extension and there would be a road into the-
But this isn't just for Financial Holding, this is other properties as well. So, um, which, which of these properties are supposed to have frontage along Airline Highway because I don't see it?
Just the Gonzalez property and it is the, it's entire family, but part of these properties are already in mixed uses, so they're just wanting to do the remainder of theirs to make it.
The Sylvia LeBlanc, if my understanding, she's part of the Gonzalez family too. So these are already people that have, that own property on Airline, Jean Gonzalez, and they're just wanting to extend their property for that mixed use.
The parcel... Some of these parcels would fall under the 51% rule.
Yes, sir. Some of them would, yes, sir.
So the John K. Marshon and the Sylvia LeBlanc could very well already be mixed use?
Yes, sir. How could, yes, uh, by doing, looking at it, uh, possibly.
Be close.
Yeah, be close. For John Marsh, K. Marshon, yes, and Sylvia, close.
Yeah. And then you have the one that's got a D on it, that's definitely a no, but the Karen Shore is definitely a-
Are we looking at these lots, uh, as a one single, or, or is, can we break it out in groups or, looks to me that these are proposed altogether, right?
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, they were proposed altogether. The, the request is all the properties, yes, sir.
But then at the same time, you, uh, you've also got a block right there and as O'Neal said, you can't conditionally rezonate. They're telling us that they want to put townhomes.
Garden homes.
Or garden homes, I'm sorry, garden homes, but we can't hold them to that. Any use that falls under mixed use is going to be allowed in there. We have no control over it.
It is, it was an understanding that we can enter a legal binding contract if two parties or more wanted to agree to that, and then it would be a legal binding contract. Not y'all.
Not with the parish.
Not with the parish, no. With the individuals, if that was a concern of any individuals. I think that we're, and I'm sure we're going to hear from the people here, I think everybody's biggest concern is that we're hearing is about drainage problems. But if this was approved and we did garden homes, I mean, we would have to do the studies and, you know, make sure that this land was usable for this anyway after the fact, so.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I'd like to hear from the public and see. I just, I don't know.
So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up and sign in.
Greg Godan, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. Basically after hearing what we've heard, we're just asking one thing, just don't fix something that ain't broke. Um, you know, somebody years ago put a lot of work into finding something agreeable to the residents of what the zoning should be. We're happy with what it is. We don't want to change it. Um, we're not against these people building houses. It's already zoned for house, uh, for medium intensity. Uh, the only difference is they want to be able to build more houses, which is obviously why they're here to, um, to change the, the zoning. Um, but again, there's no need to revise. If they want to build houses, they can build houses. We just ask to build it, what is our, you know, to the zone that's already there. I developed the property adjacent to this, um, proposed subdivision and, you know, I built it to the 90-foot, um, minimum properties. Actually, some of them were 80-foot because at the time that was the law, uh, or the zoning ordinance. It changed to 90 in mid-construction. I followed all the, the guidelines and that's all we're asking is just hold them to the same zoning. Uh, she did mention, uh, the flood concerns. That is definitely a huge concern because if you've, if you pass by the property, you'll notice, uh, well, first of all, the land doesn't lie. When, when it rains, that's the natural flow of the water. The water goes to that area. That area is lower. It's full of palmettos. I'm not a engineer or a Corps of Engineer or what have you. I'd be willing to bet there's definitely some wetlands involved in there, but irregardless, that's where the water goes. If they build a subdivision there with that many houses, obviously they got to build it up. It's going to flood the people in the area and across the street. Uh, they did the same thing on, uh, Power Road. They, they had a subdivision built there. There's signs all up and down Power Road right now, "Thanks for flooding me." That's going to happen if you build in that, that area, this kind of, kind of development. Uh, but again, we can't stop them if they want to build to, to today's zoning ordinance. If they want to build three per acre, we can't stop that.
Can I ask a question to 50, 51% rules someone mentioned? Can you explain to me what that is?
It essentially means that if 51% or more of your lot is in one zoning district, then the rest of the lot is in that zoning district.
Okay.
So some of these lots that are 51% commercial, could have double frontage.
Right.
Be commercial.
Okay. Well, and looking at the lot that they're talking about, C dash two, dash B dash three, I don't think any of that lies in the commercial or mixed corridor usage. So anyway.
We weren't, we weren't talking about those two. We were talking about the two adjacent to it.
Okay, okay. Anyway, in conclusion, I just ask, you know, don't, don't compromise the integrity of the neighborhood just basically for the benefit of someone making dollars off the development. You know, again, they can, they can build their houses, but please don't flood, flood our adjacent property owners. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Kurt Gotrow.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to y'all. Basically Greg said everything I need, I wanted to say, but I do live directly across the road from this property and live in there for 36 years. You want to see water? When we get a four to five inch rain, come to my house and see where the water goes. I've never flooded, but it's come within 16 inches of coming in my house. Across the property that they have, there is a drainage ditch. Water flows to where the fire district station is on the airline. When it rains, walk that property. You will be walking in a foot of water. Now, if y'all allow them to build anything, I know it's zoned, that houses can be built on. If you go look at that property, there's maybe five acres there, two acres that's usable. Now, has there been a wetland determination done on this property? I don't know. But I guarantee you, if we get a lot of rain, you walk this property and you don't have no rubber boots on, you're going to get wet. Now, where's the water going to go? It backs up on me already. Neighbor's on the side of me, there's an old man lives on the side of me that's 86 years old. His foot, his house is approximately two feet off the ground and I have literally seen water cover five acres of land right there, from the front, where I live on Black Bayou, to the back of the property line. Now, that's a lot of water. The ditch at the airline fills up by the fire training district, backs up toward us. What you going to do with the water? Where does it go? Nowhere. You know? Like Greg said, this area was zoned, uh, medium for houses. I'm not against houses being built there, but if this gets rezoned to mixed use residential, I mean, mixed use property, they can build anything they want there. Would you want a, a commercial building in your front yard? Have to look at whatever they determine to build there later on? I mean, he stated to me earlier, "I'll sit on the property if I don't get it approved. I'll get it zoned commercial later." You know? Sometime, he made nothing that got it zoned commercial, but he said eventually it'll get zoned commercial because some of the property is zoned commercial. They bought us the airline. Hopefully I'm out of there, but yeah. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Russ Barber.
Well, this is kind of twofold for me because I, the subdivision they are talking about in front of, uh, my Power Road and all that, that's right in my front yard, which I came in front of you guys before for that one. And it did flood people and I have to put up with that now, right here across the street where I drive out every day. That's where this will be coming in, so that's more subdivisions, more housing, more automobiles, more traffic, more everything. Um, it's got to stop somewhere. I mean, I echo everything these guys says, the water's got to go somewhere. It backs up. I'm a thousand foot off of Black Bayou. I built my own road. I have my own private road. When Black Bayou gets full, when that water has nowhere to go, it actually comes all the way back to my house and my ditches that I built. I know it backs up and that water has to go somewhere. It's not going down Power because all that is now stopped up by the other subdivision that was approved. So, uh, that's going to be a big concern and, you know, you guys just need to think about all this and, uh, you know, it, it's got to stop. Let them build houses. They can build what they can use off the land, whatever can be used. Let them build it, that's fine, but when you start adding more and more, it's just going to, it's going to back everything up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Angela Murrain.
Good evening. I just want to say that I have nothing personally against these ladies for wanting to, um, develop their townhomes. I'm here because I feel for what my neighbors and my family will go through. We have had some issues in the past with, um, business people, developers, who have promised one thing and done some underhanded things and they didn't come through with what they were supposed to. And my concern is if they change this to multi-use, that something may happen, they may not be townhomes, they may become apartment complexes, things like that will affect our property value. I'm raising my kids down the road from there. I just don't, I'm just opposed to them changing it altogether right now. I think it needs to stay just like it is, affecting the traffic situation, the flooding, and what they may possibly put down the road. Just don't want to deal with it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Public hearing is closed. You do have an opportunity to rebuttal.
I can certainly appreciate everybody's concern and we don't want to do something that's going to hurt anybody either. But I think sometimes what you do is you force people to look at their property and they have to do something with it. And we were trying to do what we felt was the best thing. You know, I see some worst case scenarios if you force it to use it as it is. We could subdivide it and sell the lots, and what if people come put mobile homes or other things on it that maybe wouldn't be developed in a manner and stuff? So I'm just saying, you know, or we could hold it, like you said. There's a, you know, we were, we were doing what we really thought would be the best proposal and we still do feel that that would be the best thing. So we hope that you approve it.
Thank you. Comments, questions from commissioners?
I want to address one issue. They were talking about flooding, but it is in a flood zone C. And as far as the wetlands determination, one has been done and it's very little wetlands. And, um, as far as the drainage, if we were to propose a subdivision, the drainage issues would be resolved at that time. I don't think this is the time to even discuss drainage because we're just asking for rezoning. And they were, um, worried that they not going to put the garden homes as proposed, but they agreed to put it in writing. So, I don't know what else to do. Anyway, that's all that I have.
And the garden homes would be on about two acres or a little over two acres, which he said is already usable space. The rest would, was proposed for a holding pond or whatever type of green space or area that we would, we, we already knew that we'd have to, you know, make sure we took care of any issues that would be there. So we weren't trying to use the whole five acres for residential and stuff.
Thank you. Comments or questions from commissioners?
What's the wish of the commission? Ellen, can I ask a question? When you looked at this for the garden homes, you know, you were talking about a density of approximately, maybe having to reduce it to 12 units. Have you looked at doing something else that didn't require the rezoning? That did require it to a commercial zoning? Let's put it to you that way.
Um, that was- We would substantially reduce the number of lots we could put on that subdivision and we would have to weigh it, whether it would, selling those lots or building on those lots would, you know, outweigh the, the cost of the development. We would have to evaluate that. I think that would not be something we would necessarily choose to do, certainly not at this point, because we just wouldn't, the investment wouldn't be worth it.
Other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I mean, I don't have an objection to the, to the garden homes or residential development at a high intensity. It'll make for a nice transition, but is there any other zoning district or any other avenue that they can use?
No, sir, none that I know of. Uh, the only thing is, is that we had the, and it doesn't really fit it, but the crossroad, but all that really does is just limit the square footage of a commercial building. So the garden homes are permitted in two districts. They're allowed in a, in a mixed use and a crossroad commercial.
I mean, the crossroads, it would make it smaller, smaller commercial or more commercial, more intense, right? Or less intense?
Less intense by the square footage of the buildings. But that's commercial. That would be commercial uses. It would still allow the garden homes, it would still allow the multifamily, it would still allow those types of things, the condos, those things.
You've had the opportunity to ask the questions. Now it's time to make a decision. And the stopwatch is on y'all now.
I'm gonna go ahead and move that we deny based on the fact that it's, it's not consistent with the way, um, Airline Highway was zoned initially. Um, I just, I can't support going out with that, the mixed use zoning anymore than it is.
Have a motion to deny by Mike Bardwell.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item six, new business. Any items of new business to be brought up? All right, moving along. Item seven, old business. We do have one item and that is the contractual agreement for Grand Chateau, um, which Mr. Parentin is going to brief us all on.
Yeah, I'm going to handle this. Um, Grand Chateau is a development that's a contract agreement with the parish and which deals with drainage and infrastructure. The original contract that we had with the developer provided that a traffic signal would be constructed if a traffic impact study was completed at the end of the project and so required. DOTD has said that's not sufficient for them. What they have said is they want the contract to provide, uh, that, that upon, uh, construction of one areas, one through three, or three of the five areas, wasn't it five areas? That they want the developer to do a traffic impact study at that time. And if a, um, light is warranted, they want to develop, build it. So basically what they're doing is making the conditions more strict on him. They're also wanting us to add into that contract cross-access, cross-Airline Highway, and also requiring, um- and also requiring that truck deliveries were not adverse there at Airline Highway. So basically, what they're doing is, to get their driveway permits, DOTD is requiring them to increase, is asking us to increase the restrictions on its development. So the developer wants to do it, I'm just here presenting it. I think we need to, I'm not, well, my recommendation is that because DOTD tells us to do it, that's part of the reasons for amending one of these contracts. And I suggest we do it, because it's making the conditions more onerous on the developer than we originally proposed to him.
So you need a motion for us to approve?
Yes, and I need the motion for us to approve that so that you can sign the amendment to the contract.
That would be my next question. Do I need to sign the amended contract?
Yes, yes. Anybody got any questions?
I'm moved to approve.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas to approve, seconded by Alan Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. We all got one of those.
Okay.
It's an item that came before the commission. We made a motion to deny, sent that recommendation to the council. The council filed the recommendation. It's going through the system.
Okay.
I guess.
I'm just guessing. Everybody, be happy.
We don't get a congratulation.
Yeah, haven't seen one.
Thank you.
If I can find it, I'll make your, make your death.
Anybody from the zoning commission or the council can call to reconsider that?
Yes.
If the council calls to reconsider, it doesn't have to come back to us?
No. If you decide to reconsider and send it to the council, they don't have to act on it.
I think that, and this is my interpretation, is if they ask you to reconsider it, or you consider, or asked to reconsider it, ask to come back to you and go through the whole motion, go through the whole process again. That's my interpretation.
That would be my thought too, but there was nothing in the packet requesting us to reconsider it, really. And so, I mean, as far as I, I could tell, it's a dead issue. It's over, it's done with. Moving along, item, okay, item eight, subcommittee report.
We did not have a subcommittee meeting this past month, lack of, didn't have a quorum. I want to schedule the next one for two weeks from tonight, nights, good?
And that's not during Thanksgiving?
That's the week before, isn't it?
That's not the day before Thanksgiving?
It's the week of Thanksgiving. Three weeks. Three weeks.
While we're talking about that, there is an item that I'd like to bring up as far as it's related to the zoning subcommittee. I had, I've spoken with Lance and Mike about this. We need to reevaluate some of our fees, and usually that falls under the zoning commission handles that. I'd hope that the zoning subcommittee would be able to take some time and sit down and do that, look over that. In fact, I had worked up some information to kind of help it along, but right now, the way it's going, we really need to act on this. So I'd like to see if I can get staff, Lance, that's you, to sit down and work out some of the issues that we've got with our fees, because as far as like site plan review, which we, comes before this commission, we really don't have a fee for that. Have any of you thought about, do we charge a fee for PUDs? Well, we're not. Well, we're not per se. We do not have a quote-unquote fee for planned unit developments. So part of the information that I was getting together for the subcommittee was looking at the hours that we are being billed by our ERA for review of all this stuff. There were some other items that Lance and I were talking about to see if we could actually work up a reasonable fee for some of these items. And if all of you are in agreement, I'd like to go ahead and direct staff to start looking at this and submit something to the commission so we can, we can act on this.
I second that.
I didn't make a motion. I can't make a motion.
We keep seconding.
I know. Probably would be good to get it in the form of a motion when we vote on it. I'll make a motion to have staff reevaluate or evaluate our fees, and bring it back before us, discuss them at the appropriate subcommittee meeting, and go from there.
Second.
I have a motion by Steve Courtwright to have staff evaluate our, Scott Courtwright, I'm sorry, Scott Courtwright, evaluate our, reevaluate our fees, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Now we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Boom.
So moved.
Steve Courtwright makes a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Any opposition or discussion? Thank you, Commissioner. Motion passes.